Good evening. Thank you. I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Here.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Here.
Mr. LaFaver?
Here.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mrs. Burke?
Here. Please stand and join me in the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We'll begin tonight's meeting with citizens' appearances. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the Board of Education who did not have an opportunity to sign the Yellow Sheet? Okay, seeing none, we will begin with Lauren Adaman, please. If you could restate your name, and we will have public comment for five minutes per person. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Lauren Atamian, and I've lived in this district for 37 years. I've had three children that have gone through this district, 54 and 211. Each of them had educators who cared about building relationships, making a difference in their students' lives. Educators who stayed after school to talk to students, to call parents, sometimes just to listen to a student that needed someone to talk to because they cared about the well-being of their students. The same educators that you are saying don't matter. After hearing some of the information that was presented to the community at Palatine High School, my husband and I were shocked to learn of some of the dishonest statements the Board has been presenting to the general public. To begin with, the Board is making it appear as if the education fund is dwindling. This is a fund designated for people and programs, salaries, and benefits, and is a fund that's funded by taxpayers. Only to find out this dwindling is happening because the school board has transferred $68 million out of the education fund into the capital fund, which is not used for programs, salaries, and benefits, as the taxpayers were told. I, as a taxpayer, am offended by this. The Board decided that they could use this money for some unnecessary changes, such as putting fireplaces and aquariums in media centers. This is frivolous and irresponsible spending. Additionally, the Board claims that teachers receive 100% tuition reimbursement, which is also untrue. The Board has never paid 100% unless the Board required teachers to take dual-credit classes so they can teach those courses, something the Board failed to mention. Competitive salaries that are in line with the current cost of living and are comparable to surrounding districts are crucial to attracting and retaining the best educators. The Board has a $7 million annual budget surplus, enough to pay for the cost of living base raises, with $5.5 million left over. Salary increases over the last four years were the lowest in the area, 1.7% over four years. I haven't heard any Board member say that there will be an increase in taxes for the community, and I'm assuming that there won't since there is a surplus over the next four years. In addition, teachers are asking for additional counselors, social workers, school psychologists for students, which the Board refused. As a parent, I know the stress children are under today, and there is an increase in mental health concerns. Mental health issues are on the rise, and I want to repeat, the Board refused to employ additional support to help these students. At the end of the day, I think it's important for the Board to remember that you were voted into this position, you were placed here to do what's best for the students, and right now you are failing them. You have... You have... You have the power to do what's right. If you decide not to do what's right, I will take the power I have to the voting booth. Thank you.
I would like to remind the audience that this is an emotionally driven, and we respect that and we understand that, but we would appreciate that we respect each other's positions and we respect each other in the room, and we protect the decorum as we proceed. Thank you. Would Pat Keating, please, come up next?
Hi, thank you for letting me speak at this time. My name is Pat Keating. I live in Schaumburg, and I moved here several years ago with my family, my daughter's family, who have four small children, specifically to get into an excellent school district, and that's just where we ended up coming. However, over the last several months, listening to all that's going on with these labor negotiations with our teachers, who are, I consider, excellent teachers, I think it's very unfair that they're being treated the way that they do. I don't want to reiterate what the previous speaker had said, but I do work a lot with the grammar school PTAs, and I see a lot of children coming up, more and more each year, that do have special needs or are at risk for maybe special counseling, and it's only going to get worse when they get to the high school. I think that behind me, you're looking at a roomful of excellent teachers that deserve to at least get what they're asking for, which is less than what they should be getting, and I find it terribly unfair that you're not meeting them at least halfway, even getting a negotiator and hasn't seemed to budge this Board. And I think if you do not act, you may lose some of your best teachers, and the district is not going to have the four-star rating that it has. So I say to you, back up a little bit. Give a little. They have given, you need to give a little. You've got the money to do it. Do not let them walk, because it's the children in this district who are going to suffer. So if you cannot end this peaceably, where there's no walkout, I say shame on you. They deserve what they are asking for. Thank you.
Jack Kraus?
Hi. I'd like to pass some information along to everybody that comes right off the school Board's website. Average teacher pay in this district, $110,000. In addition, they get $19,000 worth of healthcare benefits, courtesy of the taxpayer. They put in for their pension contributions, zero, nothing. All... Don't fool me. All 9%...
Please respect the decorum in the room.
All 9% is paid from the taxpayer. It's called a pension pickup.
Why?
Look it up. Their average state pension is $90,000. With a 3% COLA, their pension will double in about 22 years, making them multimillionaires in retirement. And they want more. Teachers make up 1% of the state and account for one-half the state debt. According to the Teacher Retirement System, we, the taxpayer, owe them $73 billion. Pension debt is unsustainable. No matter how much you raise taxes, the pension debt goes up faster. If you look at the last budget last year, they passed the $5 billion tax raise, which is great for sending more people and businesses out of state. The biggest reason they passed this is because the rating agencies were going to put Illinois on junk status because of the pension debt. So the $5 billion all went into the pensions. The problem is, next year, this year, the pension debt is $8 billion. They can either raise taxes again, however, one of the things they talked about, and please look this up, is shifting teacher pensions from the state back to the school district. And if that happens, your property taxes will double. Thank you.
John Van Exel?
I'm not going to be as eloquent as the first few callers or speakers, but I do want to ask you to sort of take a step back and look at this. We were told for a while now, earlier in the year, that our kids should go to school two weeks earlier than usual so that we could get done by Christmas, by the holiday. The kids have paid the debt, paid that debt, right? They paid their portion. I want you and the union to think about what you're doing. If you pull the class, if you go on strike and don't let them finish their final exams, you've basically charged them twice, all right? I know I'm going to hear in the next several days, several weeks, how we're all out for the kids, right? If you're really out for the kids, let's make sure this strike doesn't impact them as negatively as it could. If you've... If you strike and don't let them take their exams until the next year, the seniors aren't going to get their grades in time to get to the college applications they need to get to. There are kids that will pass the exam if they can take it on time that will not pass in January. I don't know who they are, but you're going to have that problem. You're going to have kids who are on the verge of wondering, is this whole school thing a waste of time anyways? And is it or not, I'm not sure, but it's about image, right? You're not making yourselves look any more than grownups throwing temper tantrums. That's what it appears to me, and I hope you can all sort of take a step back and think about, and really think about the kids in the, how you handle this situation. I don't know whose fault it is. I don't care. Solve it outside of my kids' classroom. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm assuming that many people in tonight's audience are here with regard to the financial aspects of the current contract negotiation. I'm here to address what I perceive to be bullying tactics being used during these negotiations. Bullying and anti-bullying is a major focus of all of our schools, from kindergarten through the final year of high school. Bullying is defined as using superior strength or influence to intimidate, typically to force another to do what one wants. The timing of this strike threat is a perfect example of the use of intimidation to force their wants on others. This contract has been in negotiation for a year. Why was there complete silence in July, August, and September? Why have you waited until December and fast approaching mid-year finals to threaten a strike? I'll tell you why. In July, August, and September, it would not have been as easy to intimidate parents and students. Much more disruption occurs now than in the summer or the fall. I am now going to take words from the Fremd High School 2018-2019 Calendar/Handbook, page 7. Bullying includes substantially interfering with the student's academic performance, substantially interfering with the student's ability to participate in or benefit from the services, activities, or privileges provided by a school. This timing... Excuse me. This timing can easily have an adverse effect on students' academics if you choose to cease classes immediately before mid-year finals begin. This timing will substantially interfere with students' abilities to participate in or benefit from services, activities, or privileges provided by the district. I am requesting that the bullying cease, and both sides return to the negotiating table and retract the threat of a strike.
Bill Elsner?
I have been a resident of the Palatine for almost 35 years. That means I've had 34 years of paying taxes to support the schools, and 34 years of hearing people complain that the taxes are too high, this and that, and so forth. And I don't have children that went to the schools. I'm single all my whole life. And through that whole time, I believe that we should support our schools because that is going to be the future for our country, and the District 211 schools have done a fine job of preparing the kids for the future. And I should say also that I have a little side thought. I'm a student supervisor at Fremd High School, and in my everyday job walking around the school, I have seen the excellent job that all the teachers do in caring for the students. I am fortunate to have developed some very good relationships with the students, and now I see them in going to the best schools in America, and the Fremd name has a great respect among all the colleges and youth universities. So what is my concern is, is with the strike, and I'm, my background is in the business, the home furnishings industry for 30 years, that the strikes never really, no one comes out a winner. And a strike that if it would happen now will cost far more than the small difference that's between the parties. And I hope that you guys can, and I, the comments about the kids for their final exams and their future for college and getting all their paperwork together, those are all very real situations, and I think it's important that we try to avoid that as best we can. And I, we have a, you know, we have great people in this room. I mean, I speak for Fremd, and I know, and you guys know, all the perfect ACT scores that come out of Fremd. There's very few other schools in the United States that have that kind of a number. All the other great kids that come out of the other schools that win all these awards and so forth, it's because of the excellence, and people come into the district because of that. And I just think that if we get into a strike, no one is going to win, and it's, I think it will damage the school system severely. So thank you.
Shannon Stein?
Wow, what an opportunity we have to recognize in this room. We have community members. We have a school board that volunteers our timing. We have teachers that don't just teach content, but mold and shape our kids every single day. They give so much and deserve a huge thank you, no matter which side you're on tonight. And whatever happens tonight, we as a unit, through, even through our disagreements, we're forming our future. I did hesitate to speak to the Board tonight because I do not pretend to know all the details of the negotiations intricately enough to speak to them. But I work as an instructional coach in the education field, and I know a lot about high-quality instruction, instructional effects on kids. So my purpose tonight is to speak behalf of our kids who are in fragile situations, specifically those in the low-income category, about 35.5% of our district, 4,144 kids approximately. We know that an effect size of .4 in studies shows a statistical impact. Two of the highest predictors of student success are formative feedback at .90 and teacher feedback at .73. So if there is a stop to student instruction, formative feedback and teacher feedback given to students will stop at a critical time when students are earning 20% of their semester grade. Our students in the most fragile situations and the most, have the least access to support and resources, will feel this impact the most. So I ask that all parties involved to consider ways to keep our kids in school through December 21st, to not interrupt our kids during finals, especially our most needy students at most risk. I know this is a lot to ask. Our teachers absolutely deserve a fair contract, and we absolutely want a resolution. So I also ask if a strike does occur, please consider how our most needy students will continue to receive support and resources to give every student an equal opportunity for success. Thank you for your time.
Helen Beers?
Hi, my name is Helen Beers. My husband, Mike, and I have lived in District 211 for over 45 years. We have six children, all of whom graduated from Hoffman Estates High School, and we also attended the town hall meeting at Palatine High School. And that is where I learned that the education fund had been used for pools, furniture, some remodeling, and so as a result, it is depleted. Now, the teachers are only asking for 2%, which is not very much, but one thing that I think should be noted, they are also asking to help the students. They want to give TAs a pay raise because their job is extremely difficult. They want to have psychologists and a social worker because it's not even only the disadvantaged students that need help, but sometimes the most advantaged, who are under so much pressure to succeed, to get into the best colleges. While the education fund is depleted with the present reserves you have, there's almost $100 million that could be used to support the teachers, support the students, and I think, if I remember correctly from the meeting, there is to give the teachers everything that they are asking. The psychologists, the special workers that they need, it will only cost about $2 million of the reserves you have, which is really a drop in the bucket for our students because they deserve it, and I think that the Board should acknowledge that by giving them their contract. Thank you.
Mr. John Braglio?
Mark, hold on one minute, please. I want to say one thing before I start the clock. I'm humbled by the people that have spoken so far. It's, you sometimes lose focus a little bit when you're immersed in an issue like this, as Dan and I have been, and Mr. Van Axel, and some of these other folks that have spoken. I hear you loud and clear, is what I want to say before I begin my prepared words. Thank you. Go ahead, Mark. I'd like to thank everyone in attendance tonight, and I apologize to each and every one of you for my role in the current state of affairs in District 211. As I have said from the beginning, this is not how I believe educated people entrusted with the well-being of students and public funds should be acting. So again, I'm sorry. The only good thing about the group assembled here this evening is it reflects the true representation of our nation's democratic principles. There are people here tonight who support the teachers, people who support the Board, and people who support neither, and I commend all of you for being here tonight and exercising your civic right. I stand here tonight on behalf of 1,500 union members with one goal, to expose the misrepresentations of the truth by this Board and its negotiating team throughout the past 12 months. I apologized earlier for my role in this mess, and let me explain that statement. My role as president and chief negotiator of this union has spanned almost 30 years, six superintendents, and multiple school board members. My experience has led me to one conclusion: The collective actions of both sides are certainly not worthy of the students we teach, nor the families we serve. For example, the Board elects to use the district email to promote discrepant information about the district's finances, misrepresentations about the negotiations process, and the guttural and disrespectful attack on the work performed by the staff of this district. For the record, you should all be ashamed of yourself, every single one of you, for emailing such slanderous comments about our staff directly to our students. You should be ashamed of yourself, every one of you. We have used the newspaper media in this district to present our differences because it's an objective forum. I'm appalled to look at all of you in the eye right now. Fortunately, our skin is thick, and your devaluation of our work shall not prevent us from doing what we love. In response to your email attacking our work, I'd like to share some facts about your actions and those of your negotiating team since 2014. You refuse to establish a safe and reliable driver ed program in our schools by removing the inept and unreliable third-party behind-the-wheel provider and reinstating our District 211 teachers. You do this to save $140,000. Shameful. You have rejected multiple union requests going back to 2014, asking for additional administrators and social workers at schools with excessive numbers of safety assessments and disciplinary referrals. You refuse to do this. You refuse to preserve the integrity of our newly remodeled media centers as academic areas, where students can receive support for 21st century skills like SAT prep, research methods, tech instruction. Instead, you position us to use our newly remodeled libraries to the tune of $800,000 each as very expensive coffee shops. Shameful. You continue to misrepresent the tuition reimbursement provision to the public by refusing to tell the truth to the taxpayers. The Board doesn't provide 100% tuition reimbursement to teachers. The benefit provides a percentage of tuition costs, and the union has provided multiple proposals to lessen the Board's contribution. Not to mention, the Board and the central office told us in 2014 that in-district programs to provide teachers with Board-required degrees would be in place by now, or eliminating, this would have eliminated the need for the benefit altogether. Teachers recognize the Boards, continues to project reserves of $100 million, $8 million in average budget, annual, you know, surpluses, debt-free status, all of which allows the Boards and the taxpayers, which could allow the Board to provide the taxpayers with an operational tax rebate and still give us CPI raises without raising taxes. Okay? You continue to refuse to recognize the contributions of our teacher assistants and our support staff and our food service. It takes six years for one of our food service workers to finally earn $15 an hour. You should be ashamed of yourselves, all of you. Your negotiating team continues to provide the union with incorrect financial reports inundating us with mathematical errors, delaying the negotiations process until now. Therefore, on behalf of the teachers of District 211, I present a vote of no confidence in the District 211 School Board and their negotiating team with respect to your ability to provide the necessary leadership to faithfully govern this district and to bring these negotiations to an end. In closing, to the Board, I ask that you stop holding our students hostage and that you put a dedicated staff, supportive taxpayers, and a proud community before your own personal ambitions. You have made this personal with my members, and for that, you should be ashamed. Several of you have never taught, nor have you coached a student in your life, yet you feel authorized to pass judgment on the people I represent. I all ask that you empower that superintendent to arrive at a deal with me and stop this nonsense now. We don't want these kids not taking their final exams. Let's end it now. Let's end it now. Thank you.
Are you Mr. Scully?
Hi, my name is Mr. Scully. I kind of feel like I'm following the Beatles. I've been an employee since '87. I appreciate all that District 211 has done for me. I raised three kids in this district. They've gone on to have very successful careers. I've been a text-bearer in this district for all of those years except for three. My wife and I, when we were younger, we bought a house in Bartlett. When I was talking to the person that was selling that house, when she asked where I lived or where I worked, I told her I worked and do it at District 211. She looked at me, she says, "Wow, really? This house that you're buying right now in Hoffman Estates would cost you $30,000 extra." The schools increased the value of our property values. I'm sorry, okay? Everybody that is in here has been affected by a teacher positively, and they've made them who they are right now, okay? It's not, you don't remember the school, the building that you went to. You don't remember the swimming pool that you went to, that you swam in. You don't remember those things. You remember the people. My wife brought me to this place because she said that, she did the research. I didn't. She wanted to move here. I didn't want to even move to northern suburbs, okay? She moved up here and says, "District 211 is one of the best places. This is where you want to get in." Guys, I'm done after this year. I'm done after this year, and I'm walking out of here, and I will not be in District 211 again, okay? But if you continue to do what you do and let the value of our teachers go down, you are going to be hurting the property values that you are in charge of, okay? It's about people. It's not about bricks and mortars. It's not about spending millions of dollars on fixing libraries or fixing locker rooms, okay? That's not what it's about, guys. You are entrusted with taking care of this district, and it's about people, okay? If it becomes hard for us to hire good people, then this district is going to go down in value, and I apologize, but your property values are going to go down in value because they're tied one-on-one. My greatest assets in my life are my three kids. That's the reason why I moved in here, so that my kids could get the best education by some of these great people that are in this district, okay? Don't do it. Do not devalue teachers. Shame on you if you do. Thank you.
Scott Lilly?
My name's Scott Lilly. I want to say thank you, guys, letting me speak here today. I've gone through community engagements. I've looked through your board minutes, and I've also looked at all your budget projections. And year after year, this district has had over $7 million in surplus every year. And every community or every board meeting I look at and read, everybody's talking about, "What are we doing with so much surplus?" Now, I can tell you one thing is that when you take education funds and you put them into a coffee shop, that doesn't help my son. My son needs professionals. He needs caring, expertise, professionals that's going to guide him through this mentalist high school career as he goes through and figures out who he is. He needs the people in this building to help him. Going to a coffee shop and a library is not going to help him. Going to a nice athletic field is not going to help him. Going to watch an LCT TV is not going to help him, or even comfy chairs. He needs people, and these are the professionals to provide the expertise, the caring and nurturing nature to guide him in the values that I want to see. And being a taxpayer in this community, I value what these professionals do because they are the ones that are going to shape my kid. And everybody in here is a parent, and they will do anything they can for their kids. I want the best for my kids. Everybody wants the best for their kids, and we'll do what it takes. These are fair offers. It's not going to hurt the district at all. It has nothing to do with money, other than I have no idea what this has to do with. But my, really, my son is going to suffer and not take finals, and he's not going to be able to look and get the caring that he needs and the guidance he needs because of services that you guys don't want to offer. So I ask you, you need to come to agreement and find a solution to this because our kids are the ones that are needed. And these professionals around here, they are the ones that provide the support, not the coffee shop, not the athletic fields, not the drainage system. It's the people in this room that provide the services for these people. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me talk to you this evening. First of all, I want to make a quick comment about the 9% that was mentioned by the gentleman over there is actually part of our pay. It's not really an additional contribution by the Board of Education. Another thing is, you know, we have $100 million in the bank, and we have a $5 million surplus every year. And so really, we're asking for, you know, for increased salaries, basically just $500,000 of that $5 million, so basically 10%. I am very proud to be a teacher in District 211. I'm a resident also in Hoffman Estates, and I'm the sponsor of the Finance Club. And basically, a good investment, we always talk about investments for the kids, and we have a good competition. And basically, I'm asking you to invest in our teachers because it's important. Thank you for considering our proposal.
I apologize, I can't see if this is a G or a C. Patricia Casades? Casades? Casades?
Thank you for letting me speak. I have been a taxpayer since 15 years ago. I was pregnant with my daughter, who is a freshman at Missyra Conan. I'm also a teaching assistant at Hoffman Estates High School for the Special Education Department. So the first point is, when I picked her up from gymnastics yesterday, she was very upset about her, the email she received from you guys about the potential of us going on strike and her having her finals pushed back. She's like, "You have to do something. You cannot do this to us." I explained things to her the best that I could on that end. So she is fortunate enough to have two college-educated parents that both went to 54 and 211, and we can give her the support that she needs. My parents, I'm first-generation Mexican-American, and my parents moved here to Hoffman Estates when I was three years old because of the school district. They provided food, shelter, clothing, and water, air is free, for us, and worked night and day in order to be able to live in Hoffman Estates. And for that, they have four children that are college-educated. And I love this district. I love this school. When I started working as a teacher assistant in special education, I brought the knowledge of Hispanic and struggle, and I also brought the knowledge in special education of ADHD, depression, and anxiety. The benefit of being a teacher assistant is that we get to work directly with students on the front lines. So I could be giving autistic student pressure hugs to regulate him, teach him how to communicate, or I could be making a student eat because I have been told he hasn't eaten in weeks. And for me, to have a student that hasn't eaten lunch at school for weeks, the fact that he ate a granola bar, an apple, and took a drink of milk is why I do what I do. I grew up, like I said, undiagnosed with my issues and the hardships that my parents had, and I can relate to these students on a one-on-one basis, and I wouldn't have it any other way. I did have three questions as a taxpayer is, when one way or another an agreement needs to be reached, why does it have to go to a strike? And what is the thing that you guys cannot find midpoint to negotiate? Like Mr. Braglia said earlier, this is not how educated people should resolve their issues. And to the board members that are posing what we are asking for, I would love for you guys to come into the classroom for a whole day and experience what we experience.
Nico Lo Presti?
My name's Nico Lo Presti. I'm a student at Front High School. I don't have any signs, sorry for that. So I'm really scared of public speaking, but I love my teachers more than I'm scared of this. I'm a little shaken so much. I'm so nervous. So my family is from Chicago, and we moved out here for the schools. My sister, Brene Nishabon, went to Front way back when, and I was really upset about it. And then I got to Front, and I understood why we moved out here. And I also intern at Front. I do two internships, and learning how hard teaching is, it's really hard. And like, I can't imagine how you people do it all the time, but like, it seems really hard, like making lesson plans. So hard. I don't know what I'm doing. So I love all my teachers. I'm in theater at Front. I can see all my teachers out here. Hi, class. Hi, guys. And like, I didn't plan on speaking here, so I'm not going to be super articulate. And I don't know a lot about money, but I know I care about my teachers a lot, and I know I see like issues in how you guys spend your money or prioritize your money. It makes me really upset. I mean, I lost the library at Front for like a year and a half for renovations, and it's just library. Like, I don't care if it has wood paneling in it or not, or like a coffee bar. It doesn't matter to me. I just wanted my like library for finals and didn't get it for a year, and it kind of stunk. And I also got the email that you guys sent out. It was really weird. I didn't expect an email from my board, and I didn't think it was like really professional, even though y'all are in suits. Sorry. And like, I'm wearing a baseball hat, so I'm not that professional, but like, I don't know. It felt weird to get that from y'all, and like, maybe in the future, don't do that because it felt weird. I don't know. And I have finals next week. I have two finals. It's not that big of a deal. But like, I don't care if I take my finals after break, if it means my teachers get what they deserve, and like, I don't know. I don't care if I take my like survey final after. It matters, but like, I think my teachers matter a lot more, and all the people who work there matter a lot more. I think in your email, you missed out a lot of points. I think you prioritized a lot on like monetary policies, and I think that was kind of like a very choice decision to kind of make the parents and the students be more on your side, which I get. But I know there's a lot more that they're asking for, and I think it would have been a lot better if you guys talked about that with the school psychiatrist. I believe Front only has one. And I know our counselors have a lot of students. I love my counselor. She's a really nice lady, but it can be hard to like get in there and talk to her, and I know it feels kind of like disconnected because she has so many students, but I think having them have like less students would be really nice. I can't imagine how hard it is for them. I know there are a lot of things in the school that I don't understand just because I'm a student, but like, I would really appreciate if you guys could prioritize our teachers because I moved out here for this, and like, you guys have done a lot for me, and like all the students out here and all the teachers out here, and I really appreciate that. But I would also really appreciate if you could think about the students and how much we care about our teachers. I know every student at Front at least can name at least five teachers they love. Like, I can name, I can look out here and see so many teachers I care about so much, and they mean so much to me. And I'm like shaken, sorry. And I'm wearing like my Theater Fest hoodie, which like Front High School helps me go to, and it's in a few weeks, and like, I would give that up for this. And that was like my birthday present from my mom, and she's like, "Well, think of something new." But like, I don't know. I don't want my teachers to go on strike, but if they have to, like, I don't care. I love my teachers, and I hope you guys can care about them as much as I do and try to meet them in the middle at least.
Ralph Bonatz?
Steve Mike's on the bench.
Okay. Did anyone else come in late? I know, we know parking might have been a challenge, and we had said we were going to take some other, if they came in. Okay. I'm sorry? If you wouldn't mind just announcing who you are, that'd be great. Thank you.
My name is Jasmine Losowski. I'm a former student at Schaumburg High School. I'm currently at University of Illinois Springfield, and I'm about to graduate in the spring. And I'm not going to speak a lot. I just got back from Springfield today, didn't really know anything. I don't know the data. I don't know the numbers. But I know the teachers, and they deserve more from you. I am not, like, I would not have gotten where I am today without the counselors I had, the teachers I had, the programs I had at Schaumburg High School. I have close to a 4.0 now, and that's not because I decided to become smart after I graduated from high school. That's because of the teachers I had in high school. They say that high school prepares you, and that's what they do, and these teachers deserve more from the board. These teachers put in, day in and day out, the time throughout the school day, on the weekends, after school. They put in that time, and I think they deserve that from you now. I think they deserve just for you to listen and realize that this is more about money. This is about the fact that they care about the students so much. I've sat down with these teachers on my own time. I wouldn't, what student is like, "Yeah, I want to go back for winter break to see my old teachers." I do it every single time I come back. I was spending time with them today, and I came back today because I love these teachers. I come back for programs because I love the teachers. I love the counselors, and I love what they do, and they deserve this from you. That's all I really wanted to say, and thank you.
Just if you could also say your name as well, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I currently am a senior here at Conan, and I get, I may not know everything that's going on, but it's about 7:30, and I can already assume that my math teacher is looking at me thinking, "Why aren't you home? You were coughing up a lung, and you also have a math test tomorrow." But my econ teacher also taught me what opportunity cost is, and I thought, that's what was it. If I had done this a year ago, I probably would have been a nervous wreck, but thank you to my speech teacher who has finally given me the courage to not be as afraid of public speaking. And on top of that, there's also my counselor who would probably know whenever I would have a panic attack, I would end up in his office freaking out. I have been a part of Conan, well, since freshman year. I didn't move here. Well, when I was six years old, my parents finally decided, "Yeah, the high school you're going to end up at, not a very good one. So let's move to Schaumburg." And it was honestly one of the best decisions they made. My dad and his sister all went, actually... My dad and his sister all went, actually both went to Schaumburg, and my aunt actually went through Conan, and it's one thing that they were so happy that they did. I've never seen my teachers more stressed over anything in their lives than this strike, but yet, they kept on teaching, and what they've been able to tell us has actually been very helpful, because I see these teachers every day, and I'm looking at all of your faces, and the only one I can seem to recognize is Dr. Cates, probably because everyone is tweeting about him on Twitter when they want a snow day. On that note, I just really want to say, my teachers work super hard to make sure that we're the best that we can be. I'm off to college next August, and I really hope that I can visit all of them, and I know the last thing that any of them is to strike, want to, the last thing that any of them want to do is to strike, but they should get what they deserve, because they work awfully hard about, over what they do. I've seen teachers put in so much time when it comes to grading and giving me feedback, that it's, I'm so happy that I decided to speak on behalf of them, because they truly just should get what they deserve. They've worked hard, and honestly, I couldn't ask for better teachers. I know that today, I could just, I walked into this school and I felt this tension from everyone, that they knew what was coming tonight, but they also had about 150 students each that they had to teach. And it'd be nice that if finals didn't get moved, but if that's what it has to come to, it's what it has to come to. Because in the end, if they don't get what they want, they should, they're fighting for what they want, and that takes a lot of courage. So, on that note, I hope you give them what they want, and hopefully, we're not in this kind of situation anytime soon. Thank you.
We have another one that, and I, I don't feel comfortable not saying yes, so. We would have preferred the signing on the yellow sheet, by the way, but that's okay.
Thank you, I apologize. I did not expect to speak at all, and, and I just brought my son, who left a little earlier today, just to experience this as an elementary school teacher. I have to be honest, we make very different salaries as an elementary school teacher, and it was really hard for me to see that email coming in this morning, but, and I, I just wanted to see what was happening and see the other side of things, because, you know, being in a union ourselves, and, and not being a part of, you know, not having, going through a strike or anything like that, and knowing my heart for teaching, and I know that you all share it as well, because we choose this profession for a reason, but I had to admit, when I got that email from the school board, as a, as receiving that, yeah, I was angry and I was frustrated, and I was, I was on that side, but now, I'm getting the full story from everyone here, and seeing that, that there was so much more than what was displayed in that email. And as a parent and as a teacher, it, it just was so one-sided that I didn't realize that there were so many other things on the table. And I'm thankful that you are standing up for our kids as, you know, for that, and, and I, I can't believe I ended up coming up here to say that, but it, it just was so, you know, yeah, like, like the student said, and I'm, again, I'm not articulate, because I didn't expect this, but it was so one-sided that I came in here ready to be like, "Oh my goodness," you know, like, you know, "What are you fighting for, this is great, this is..." And then you realize what the, the true essence of the argument is, and, and I beg you and I beseech you to please settle this and, and give what they rightfully deserve, because it does sound like there were some financial decisions that were not above board, and, and I, I ask you humbly to go ahead and please allow these students to get their, their scholarship applications in and get everything that they deserve, because you have such a great thing going on here, and such a wonderful program, and, and you're nationally known, and we don't want to be nationally known for, for a strike, we want to be nationally known for the progress and what District 211 is doing.
Is that Gabrielle, by any chance? Okay, no, I, that's you, and yes, afterwards.
My name is Gabrielle Giuliano, I'm a product of District 211, I am a taxpayer in the community, and I am a teacher at Schaumburg High School. And as, I'll be honest with you, the students, you inspired me to come up and talk, you When I left District 211, I'll be honest, I didn't want to be a teacher, didn't cross my mind, because I took my education for granted, but when I left the district and went into the world, I realized just how much better prepared I was to go into the future. And I had the opportunity to teach, and it was like, "What am I doing, this is my calling, is my opportunity to give back to the district that gave to me, that made me the quality person that I am?" And it was my dedication and duty to come back and work with the people that mentored me so that I could become the best teacher I could be, and so that I can continue the, the tradition of excellence that is this district, and to mentor the young teachers in this district, so that we could continue the excellence that is District 211. And if we continue with this game of talking war, we tear at the threads of excellence that, again, is this district. I am honored, honored to teach here and to continue what District 211 is, and I am honored to give all the extra free time I have, so that these students you hear talking, that we have a future generation and another generation after that, so that they go into the world being the best people that they can be, and the most successful they can be. And I know some of you board members know exactly what I'm talking about, because I have provided your children with the opportunities that were provided to me. What we're asking for is fair, what we're asking for is fiscally responsible, I speak to you as a product of the district, as a tax member, as a member of this union, please come back to the table, let's get this resolved, let's continue the level of respect and dignity that District 211 has, and continue the future of excellence that is District 211.
I'm, I'm going to have you speak in one moment, if you could also share your name with us, that would be great. I'm going to make a call out right now, because people are inspired and they're moving and they want to speak, and we definitely want to listen, but we did have our sign up for a reason, so if I could have a show of hands of people that, who want to continue to speak, we will go ahead and move that. I will need to move the needle a little bit to the three-minute mark, because we do, instead of five, because we do typically do that with threshold, because we also have a lot of on the agenda tonight. So, I know I see one hand over here, and one here. Could I maybe have some help documenting it for me? I'd appreciate that, otherwise I might forget, because I'm trying to listen to the podium as well. So, we definitely want to hear from you, and we appreciate everybody in the room and allowing us to take that moment to kind of re-shift back to procedural stuff. Okay, thank you.
Um, I'm, my name is Naomi Sato, and I go to Hoffman Estates High School. I didn't intend on speaking here today, because I'm terrified of public speaking, but the other students inspired me to come up to talk about how my teachers, I see some of the teachers here that go to my school, and some of them are my favorite teachers here, and they've inspired me as a student to become better as a person and as a student, and it just makes me really sad to see that the teachers are going to be treated this way, and that they have to make like, these sacrifices and consider striking because of the decisions the board has made. And similar to what the other students were saying, how, I don't want my finals to get pushed back, but if the teachers have to do what they have to do to get the, the quality, like, give us the quality education, then I'll be fine with it, as long as the teachers get what they deserve, because they're giving back to us every day, so I would just like you guys to give back to the teachers. And I just wanted to say that every day, like, recently in the past weeks, teachers have been staying after school until five and coming early to meet with us as students and help us prepare for our finals, and all the students' hard work and effort, and all the teachers' work and effort of putting extra time in to help us would go to waste if we have to wait to put our finals back after. But thank you for listening to me speak here today.
How are we doing on that list? I think that was the only other one I thought I saw, was right here in the blue sweater. Thank you. Okay, so we have everybody who wants to speak. As they continue to collect, but again, just a friendly reminder, we're on three minutes. Maya Kumar.
Hi, my name's Maya Kumar, I'm a junior here at Conan High School. I just want to say, I really respect all the administrators, all the teachers, all the parents, and that, I, I really do respect that our voice is being represented. So, I don't know a lot about econ and finance, but I am in AP US History right now, and we learn a lot about perspective. And you guys have a perspective, and I'm not going to get into that, because again, I don't really know about the, about the technicalities, but I do know the teachers, I know the teachers, I know all my teachers very well, they're like my friends. My parents who grew up in India, they didn't know their teachers well, they just taught them. My teachers, they're like my closest friends, I talk to my teachers about everything. My teachers are like my parents away from home, and if they say, they ask for something, I think that they deserve it, and here's why. I've talked to all of my teachers about the strike before, it was just, as it was just a rumor, and every single one of them said, they didn't want to do anything to hurt the students. For them, it's all about the students, and I respect that more than I could possibly state. I also do want to say with all due respect, I did think your email was quite unprofessional, and I do respect all of you as amazing administrators, but devaluing our teachers was just not the right move, and I'm sure it caused feelings of emotional enrage that the teachers didn't want to feel towards you. The teachers wanted the best, easiest resolution, as Mr. Bragley said, he didn't want to give this mess up, he didn't want a mess, he wants a negotiation, and a simple one. And like I said, I don't know all the technicalities, but I do know that students are getting very, very frightened about this. Students want this place to be a home, students want this place to be the place where they learn. And where they learn shouldn't be a place where teachers are feeling scared, students are feeling that they might not be able to take their final, it should be a place to learn. Education shouldn't come to this, and... So, I just wanted to say, I wanted to say that I'm representing my teachers right now, because every single teacher in Conan High School I know is an amazing, phenomenal teacher. I'm a junior, I haven't come across one teacher who I didn't think, didn't teach me anything or didn't help me in any way possible. I just think, from a student's perspective, the students are the most important part in this, because like I said, like, the finance and everything, whatever, but like, the students are the ones taking the final, the students are the ones that are like, the, like, the students are the core of this concept, and I, two students spoke amazingly, and I just want to give you more of the student's perspective, we don't want to get hurt by this, we just want to take our finals, and we want our teachers to be happy, and we want this to be as peaceful as possible, but thank you guys, yeah, very cool.
Mitch Nicola?
Good evening, my name is Mitch Nicola, I lived in this district for 40 years, and sitting out there, I'm trying to figure out, where is the beef? Seems like, from my perspective, if CPI is 2.8, teachers asking for 2%, they're not asking for raise, they're actually getting shifted.
Suggested motion that the Board of Education return to open session?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinscha?
Aye.
Mrs. Klemkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. Any meeting recap? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. With my thick gavel.